Ready? Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for October 17, 2016. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Spohays.
Here.
Mr. Cange.
President.
Mr. Spinelli.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Barker and Mr. Strike have been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. You have in front of you minutes for September 12, 2016. Can I have a motion to adopt?
I have a correction.
Could I just, I still need that motion to adopt initially.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Spohays, can I get a second? Seconded, Mr. Spring, go ahead.
Yes, let me see. On page five of the, as usual.
You're not looking out for anybody but yourself.
Yeah, exactly. The historic record is going to show that I was perfect in whatever I said in all the meetings I attended, but the, I think there's a little bit of a problem with this last sentence in the first paragraph. Assuming the petitioner will do this is not acceptable to him. Well, I think it makes more sense assuming the petitioner will not do this. Will do this is not acceptable to him.
Go ahead and state.
It's just a matter of striking the nots.
So how do you think it should read? Just read the sentence the way you think it should read.
Assuming the petitioner will do this is not acceptable to him. Because I was explaining how it would be possible to do a site plan in which the impact would not be too severe on the neighboring residential neighborhood and so assuming that he will do that doesn't, you know, is what I intended. Does that make sense, Lauren? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll accept that change. Any other issues or questions on the minutes? Any objection to adopting the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are adopted. Next up is disclosures. Mr. Spring?
I have none.
Danielle?
I was not present during the meeting in September for the items that are on the consent agenda, so I will not be voting on those.
Thank you. Brandon?
No disclosures.
Tony? Andre?
None.
Brandon?
None.
You know, I would simply add that we're hearing the, and I assume this goes for a lot of us, but we're going to start discussing the land use plan map here this evening. And there are situations where my company owns land that may be in an area that's designated for a change. People here from real estate or development might be in a similar situation. And I think the general treatment has been because it's an area-wide situation, we're allowed, and it's also a recommendation to the Assembly that we're allowed to weigh in on that. Otherwise, we'd probably have a short board moving forward. But that said, I personally have properties and there's been comments submitted on behalf of my organization to discuss changes to the land use plan map. And I'd like to hear how the body would like to deal with that situation should an amendment or an issue come up specific to a property that's owned by my employer. Go ahead, Tony.
Mr. Chair, I believe that if your comments are there, they're on public record. Again, this does go to the Assembly. I think your comments are probably noted and, you know, to participate as much as you can or you think before, you know, you think it would create a conflict kind of to the body at large, I would say. But I don't see a problem with it. You've got, like I said, you put your comments in and they're on record, so.
Okay. Mr. Spring?
I just wondered about the, what the type of comments you'd be, you expect to make. Will it involve rezonings or, I mean, not rezonings, but land use designation changes?
Yeah, some of them do.
Some of them would be more intense. Well, I think, yeah, I'd be willing to accept that. Like Vice Chair said, I think it's important, though, that you stipulate your conflict or your role as a developer when you make those comments so that's clear in the record that we're not trying to hide anything and we can freely discuss it then.
Okay. And I guess what I would just say is that we're not going to deliberate on this plan here tonight, but in the event that there are, I mean, there already are designations in there that have to do with my, the properties that we have. I guess I could provide something in writing that indicates what they are in the event that there's some change, also indicate ahead of time that that disclosure is on record. Does that work? Staff, you have any comments on how we deal with that? Okay. I don't think so. Brandon, I appreciate that, but I think I don't need a formal motion. Next up. And Brandon, you'll, just to note, you'll also be abstaining from the resolutions that we're approving here. So on the consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Tony, seconded by Mr. Spinelli. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Any objection? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next up is case 2016-0102, time extended, extension, minor conditional use amendment. This is not a public hearing. Request for time extension of a previously approved conditional use of Planning and Zoning Commission case number 2010-109, resolution number 2011-18. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On July 11, 2011, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a conditional use permit for natural resource extraction, P&amp;Z Resolution 2011-18, applied for by Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority Land Office. The petitioner is requesting a five-year extension in accordance with the conditions of approval set forth in Resolution 2011-18. Condition B 5 of Resolution 2011-18 states, and I quote, "This approval is valid until December 1, 2016. Prior to that date, the petitioner may apply for a time extension on the same record supplemented as deemed appropriate by the department. The time extension would be granted after a non-public hearing if the commission finds the operation has not violated the conditions of approval, nor has it created noise violation or environmental problems either on-site or off-site," end quote. Approval of the conditional use permit will expire on December 1, 2016. The petitioner's request has become necessary for three reasons. First, there was a shortage of available fill during the 2012 construction season that left the playfields at a less-than-desirable slope. Second, the petitioner would like to use the playfields as a filled disposal site from the planned residential development on the northern half of the site. Lastly, the petitioner anticipates an opportunity to receive unclassified excavation material from the adjacent road improvements on Yosemite Drive. As of this writing, there have been no environmental violations or noise complaints at this site due to the necessity of continuing improvements to this site for the enhancement of neighborhood recreation, along with the anticipated development of a residential neighborhood within the project area and improvements to Yosemite Drive. Staff recommends approval of the time extension subject to the original conditions as stated in P&amp;Z Resolution 2011-18." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Is the petitioner here?
Hello, I'm Lauren Bisha with Lowndes Baron Associates, and I have Brian Yakel with the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority Land Office here with us. And we reviewed the staff packet and we concur with the conditions. And at this time, we'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the will of the body? Mr. Cange?
Thank you. Through the chair, regarding case 2016-0102, the Alaska Mental Health Trust Land Office, I move to approve the one-time extension for the conditional use permit for natural resource extraction.
Thank you, Mr. Cange, seconded by Mr. Spohays. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that the petitioner has no violations or noise complaints at the site. It's supported by, staff is outlined in our packet on page two, and I tend to vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cange. Any additional comments? Hearing none, please vote. And that time extension's approved. Thank you. Brandon, need your vote. Thank you. Next up, case 2016-0147, Municipality of Anchorage, Long Range Planning Review and Recommendation of the General Government 2017 Proposed Capital Improvement Budget and the 2017-2022 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. We have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Just a few brief comments relative to the proposed CIB, CIP. Staff did provide you with a staff report. I won't go through all of that. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And you've also had Mr. Wilber and Mr. Jones speak during the work session, but just fast-forwarding to the recommendations on page five of the staff packet. The Planning Division recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the adoption of the proposed 2017 CIB and the 2017-2022 CIB to the Assembly. The Planning Department also recommends, as it has in the past, that the Office of Management and Budget provide an update on the CIP process to the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier in the year to afford the Commission sufficient time to review and make recommendations. The Planning Department recommends, as it has again in the past, that OMB and the various submitting departments provide information on how projects were identified and which implement adopted land use and functional plans. And then finally, the last recommendation is the Planning Department recommends that the six-year CIP should provide a means to track the progression of projects listed in the prior year's CIP, as well as projects that are completely new to the CIP for that year. So that concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions for staff? I guess my question is presuming that we actually get through a land use plan map adoption process in the coming months, and so well before it's time for CIP, CIB planning next year, I'm wondering if any of you can envision how you think that process might be different with sort of a fresh municipal adopted plan with some, with a whole bunch of action steps in the back of the plan and a whole bunch of suggestions that this funding is a key portion of implementing that plan? So I'm wondering if rather than just expecting OMB and Mr. Wilber to kind of say how they came up with them, what the collaboration and what the process is that exists so that planning's involved in that process throughout the year?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, excellent question. And I would just note that within the land use plan map actions checklist, there is direction to do exactly that by the Planning Department and other applicable agencies. So we fully intend, after the adoption of that plan, to collaborate with OMB to flesh that out. I can't tell you what that looks like right now, right at this moment, but that is on our work plan to do that.
If I can suggest, because we, and Hal, maybe you can respond to this, but, you know, at some point maybe in the coming months, could we, could we hear what that plan, because we've got a lot of things in that checklist, and I just want to make sure there's actually some, some sort of process and commitment that you'll hit certain milestones.
This is Hal Hart, Planning Director. I agree with that. The, we've already just started trading notes here on the dais, and so one of the things that I think would be helpful in this process is transparency in that process overall and producing something like a citizen's guide to infrastructure, which is really directed at our boards and commissions as well as our neighborhoods and just general community, just so they know how we come up with those priorities as a community, would be one of the things that we could talk about. The other one certainly is we began that discussion of ROI. What does that mean? So to dig that out deeper, that could mean a lot of different things, the way we would suggest that in the year ahead.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Spring. Go ahead.
Not so much a question, I guess it's just a recommendation to follow up on what the Chair was saying, that I think there needs to be early, as soon as possible after adoption of the land use plan, some way to identify where you're going to be starting on the focus, redevelopment focus areas. So you've got three of them right now. You've got to decide whether you're going to do all three of them or are you going to do one of them, and then start working on the plan for that area. So you have a well-reasoned set of projects that can be funded with, through the CIP. And I would personally recommend, based on what I know of these three areas, to try do the spinar, what is it, mid-spinar focus redevelopment area, because I think that, in my opinion, has the most potential to coordinate and have synergy with what's already going on there with other nonprofits and also, yeah, and private development. So this is my opinion.
Let's see, let's see if we get it through the land use plan map process first.
Yes.
But thank you for the comment. Anyone else with questions? Lance, do you want to respond to that notion? Is there something that would, you know, make your life easier or harder that?
I think it would be beneficial for the Commission to be in a situation where you're helping us create a CIB rather than a situation where you're responding to a CIB. And the only way that we can actually do that is for, I think, some of the comments that Hal mentioned is, early on in the process, when community councils are submitting projects, they're looking at it from a different perspective than the Planning and Zoning Commission ought to be looking at it, which is you're looking at that land use map, as Mr. Spring suggests, you know, are the projects that we have proposed, are they implementing that land use map? And do that with project management engineering, with parks and recreation, with maintenance and operations. And I think, because we're in a situation right now where we build a capital improvement budget and then we share it with you after the administration releases it, because that's when we're ready to do it. So your involvement in helping us create it a little sooner would be a better process, both for you and for us.
And we'd talked about at some point sort of an implementation committee or something. I think we've whittled down, our committee's pretty, pretty good, but that would be one that I think frankly is, is pretty important, some structure in that way. I'm not sure what that looks like, but.
And OMB would be glad to participate in that.
Great, thanks. Mr. Spohays, then, then Mr. Cange?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question, Lance, and maybe a point of clarification, would we be correct in kind of wearing the hat of, at Planning and Zoning, when the Commission is for the citizens of the municipality and looking at the total requested bond package and working kind of through that process? We kind of talked about the indebtedness and what that dollar is.
Right.
And I think that anything above that would be kind of a more debt on the individuals, and maybe that debt has to be paid back, and I imagine it would probably be paid back via property taxes or something like that. So that would be something we'd work on as a commission then, correct?
Yeah, if I could, through the Chair. The municipality has a debt management policy that the Assembly approved last year. I can get you guys a copy of the debt management policy, and it talks specifically about the issuance of debt in relation to the amount that we're retiring. And I'd be glad to share that policy with you, and this CIB is endeavoring to implement that policy.
Mr. Spohays, you're back in the queue, is it?
Just a follow-up.
Go ahead.
I think that would really help, honestly, Lance, because it would kind of say how the structure was sent, set up for the, how you guys budgeted your CIP, if you will, your CIB. Because when I kind of originally looked at this, I scrubbed through it and I said, well, here we go in a down economy, does it make sense to add more debt? But if it's already been Assembly-approved, if that was something that was provided, that would be very helpful.
Okay, I will share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cange.
Thank you, through the Chair. Maybe just a thought, a long time ago, I served on this budget advisory commission, and I do recall that to kind of help this process, we actually drafted a letter of support that kind of went along with the Mayor's letter that then came to this body, I'm assuming. So, you know, I don't know, because again, we had talked about having one or two of us involved in the process, and it would help just, because I know they vet, we looked at it when I was on that commission, but if they were able to offer some sort of letter of support or some other pointers or something that they looked at that they could point out to us, because, you know, getting this document and, you know, combing through it could be quite onerous, and so just kind of part of the process, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Cange. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, what's the will of the body? Mr. Spring?
I recommend to approve, recommendation to approve the six-year, is it six-year, I think, capital improvement program as presented by the OMB Director with the recommendations contained in the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Can I get a second? Seconded by Ms. Bailey. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I think this is a big improvement of, from last year's CIP in terms of adherence to plans, previously adopted plans. There's several projects in particular that I've always been kind of wondering about how they got into the, into the CIP when they weren't in any plan. I think you did a very good job of cleaning that up, and I don't see any, any conflicts with adopted plans, and I think I really like the selection of projects that are proposed a lot. Some very good projects in there.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Any other comments? Just, I would add that perhaps not by choice, the budget shows that we are less reliant on state funding moving forward, and I certainly appreciate that they're small issues, but, but knowing that there's funding for 10 alleys or so a year, and there's some money in there for storm drain condition assessment shows, I think, some, some way to be more proactive than simply reactive. So small, small items, but it certainly is appreciated. With that, could please have a vote? And the CIB, CIP is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wilber, for your time here with us this evening. Thank you. All right, next up, last case of the evening, 2016-0127, the review and recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the land use plan map and public hearing draft. This item is a public hearing, and the procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission Rules of Procedure. Petitioners, 10 minutes. Representatives of groups such as community councils or PTAs, 5 minutes, and individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commission recommendations to the Assembly, of which this is one. And I guess I would add two things. I have my computer open here with the interactive land use plan map, because it's otherwise pretty hard to read on the 11 by 17, so there is wireless in the, in the library. And just for the public, we do not intend to deliberate here this evening. We want to hear the public testimony. There've been a lot of questions that are still coming in. There's a lot of comments coming in. We had a letter at a work session, what was it, Friday, just Friday, from the Federation of Community Councils, asking the Assembly and the Planning Commission for an extension of written comments, and I believe that was Vice Chair Cheney indicated that it would be appropriate to extend those written comments to November 1, and ask staff to sort of reaffirm that that's what they heard as well. But that said, this might be the only evening for public testimony. So with that, could we have staff presentation?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. My name is Jody Sights, and I am tasked with introducing our group tonight. I think most of you know already that this has been a team effort, and I think everybody in the Long Range Planning Division has worked on it. To my right is the Senior Planner and Project Manager, Tom Davis, Carol Wong, our Division Manager, John Cecil, Senior Planner. Also, Thead Tobis joins me up here, and he is also a Senior Planner with the Long Range Planning Division. So this is actually the result of two public processes, but I want to give you a tiny bit of background. We were tasked with producing the land use plan map by the previous administration, starting about 18 months ago. And in February, we produced a community discussion draft, which between February and June, we went throughout the community, we held public meetings and took public comment on. That resulted in about 500 pages of community comment, which was reviewed and incorporated into the public hearing draft. The public hearing draft was publicly released on the Internet, September 26, in its complete form with maps and narrative. That also was the result of quite a number of public presentations, about five public presentations, three focus group meetings, seven regional and area-specific public workshops, two community-wide meetings, in addition to individual stakeholder consultations. So there have been over 120 consultations throughout the last year, and some of those were with individuals or entities more than one time. We worked with the community councils and went to at least 20 of the different community council meetings. Sometimes we return to community councils as they requested multiple times. Tonight, you're receiving public comments regarding the public hearing draft, which we have received since October 6. This is following the packet of comments that you received at the joint work session October 7. The public hearing draft was mailed out to all community councils, municipal and state agencies and other organizations. It's been available on the website, along with the maps, since September 26. And I already went over the link, the, our list of public presentations for you, so. The project has also developed an email list of about 150 people, and some of those were kind enough to forward our material to their constituents. Including the Federation of Community Councils, we thank them for their assistance with this process. We also did some advertising. We published PSAs, and we posted our material on the Anchorage Press for meetings. And we also had a presence on the Alaska Public Media website. So in conclusion, the 18 months that the project has been underway, by our account, is a fairly brief, brief time period to produce the map, and people have commented on that repeatedly as we've asked them for public comment and as we have felt the need to get the final drafts out. So thank you for your time, and I will turn this over to Tom Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chair, for the remainder of the presentation, we'll quickly walk through some of the basics about the land use plan map, and you have with you your 11 by 17 copy of the color map. This is more than a map, it is a plan. It includes policies, actions, as well as a key description in Section 2 of all the land use plan map categories. In addition to the land use plan map color version that you've been received, there's also a colorblind-friendly version of the land use plan map. This is really important, there's a certain percent of our readers who can't read a color map, and so if, upon request of the Commission, we can also distribute the colorblind-friendly version of the land use plan map.
Maybe you could turn it on, on the screen.
Sorry?
I can't see the, never mind.
That looks colorblind up there. Looking at your legend, you have six categories of places set up in the first two columns of your legend. Six places, there are neighborhoods, centers, corridors, open spaces, public Six places, there are neighborhoods, centers, corridors, open spaces, public institutions, and industrial employment areas. These break out to eighteen different land use designations, and the land use designations are the color shading on your map. All areas of the Anchorage Bowl have one of these eighteen colors. Each area of the bowl, each place in the bowl, has only one of these eighteen colors. Now, each of these colors, some of them are mixed-use designations, and some allow a wide range of land uses within them. However, each part of the bowl has only one of the eighteen colors in the first two columns of your legend. The yellow browns are residential, the dark pinks, the purples are your centers, mixed use and commercial centers. The open spaces are the green, the light pastel color in the bottom-left corner, those are your corridors. One of which, mixed use, the Main Street Corridor, the very one, last one in the lower-left, is the only land use designation where the base color of the land use designation, you identify it using a line pattern. So it's the only baseline use designation where you can tell it apart from its neighbors using a line pattern. The institutional and public facilities are blue, there's only three colors, but there are a bunch of familiar-looking icons that help to differentiate some of the more dramatically different institutions, such as whether it's a school, or a power plant, or other major In your plan, in Section Two, beginning on, I think pages twenty-three and twenty-four, begins the description, the map key to these legend items. Section Two begins on page twenty-one, and that explains how to read the rest of this section. This is the biggest part of the plan in length. If you turn to page twenty-six to twenty-seven, there begin, the beginnings of these land use descriptions, and each one begins with, in paragraph form, an overview of the role and function of the land use designation. So let's take a look at single-family and two-family at the very end of page twenty-six. It's in the far-right column in the lower-right corner of page twenty-six. Typical designation begins with a description of the overall role and function of the district, and then, series of bulleted designations, it lists the range of uses allowed in the district, excuse me, in the land use designation. Each land use designation also includes a overview of the area's intended physical character, so the three-dimensional character and pattern of development in the area. The description also includes the general residential density of the overall area, and, and then lastly, the implementation, zoning districts. As typical, on page twenty-seven, you can see zoning in the middle column, lists a range of potential zoning districts that may be appropriate to implement this one land use designation called single and two-family. Not every zoning district on that list is appropriate for any given area designated in this color, and so the most intense district is not necessarily the most appropriate. It's something that would be decided through future rezoning. In addition to the plan, in response to a question from a commissioner at the most recent Planning and Zoning Commission and Director's Lunch Department, Carol Wong and John Cecil have developed a, a working draft cross-reference between the zoning districts and the land use designations. You should have one for today's, for your information. It's a cheat sheet, basically. It takes the information in the plan about what zoning districts correspond to each land use designation, and just calls that into a simple front-side, backside cheat sheet. It's a working draft. We'll provide a final with the comment-response document that we will submit to the Planning and Zoning Commission before it begins its deliberations, but it's just for your initial information tonight. We'll provide a final later, and if it's the will of the commission, we can also develop a version that might be inserted into the plan, if you find this a helpful reference. On pages thirty-four and thirty-five is another example, also in the lower-right corner on page thirty-four, an example of another designation called Commercial Corridor. In Commercial Corridor, it also provides a variety of information about the uses and the character of the district. Like many designations in this plan, it includes in its character description a reference back to infill design principles. So, the bottom bullet in the lower-left-hand corner of page thirty-five, character description refers simply to infill design principles. So, the previous draft of this Land Use Plan Map document, each designation referred to characteristics, physical characteristics of its designation, and what we found is that it was repeating itself, sometimes saying the same thing in a different way from one designation to another. So we've taken a page out of the book of other cities that have developed this, and we're referring them back to a consolidated and consistently stated set of characteristics back on page twenty-five. So every time you see that reference back to infill design principles, you see it here on page twenty-five, where we've taken much of the content that made the previous draft longer and consolidated it here, and then also included information here on page twenty-five that responds to public comment regarding infill development. The third column on your legend, on your eleven-by-seventeen copy, is the growth-supporting features. Every third column item on your map is not a land use designation. It is a, a feature or characteristic of certain parts of town which are intended to enhance the land use designation, respond to issues, and, and allow the map to tailor to certain kinds of areas. And therefore, the first shown is in a line pattern, transit-supported development, and it's along certain selected street corridors in the bowl. You will see that it fades off, it doesn't have a sharp boundary, but it fades off. That's to imply that the boundary shown isn't a sharp boundary, but will be determined to what extent this transit-supported development pattern spreads out into the surrounding neighborhoods. So that's a deliberately faded boundary. More information about that in the description of this growth-supporting feature. The descriptions of the growth-supporting features begin on page forty-four, forty-five, after the land use designations. The next feature down is called Greenway-Supported Development, shown in a green tartan pattern, a tartan pattern with the squares and the crossing lines. This is really describing two things going on the map, the first of which is a linear feature. You'll find it going through redeveloping mixed-use centers, and it's intended to encourage pattern of development that integrates new ways, multimodal ways to get into those redeveloping centers. For example, the, the arc of Fish Creek cutting across the south part of, of the midtown city center, the purple city center, cutting across from west of midtown to east of midtown on the Fish Creek Corridor. That's the first type of feature you'll see with that tartan pattern, it's linear. The second feature, Greenway-Supported Development, is not linear. It is the tartan pattern where it overlays the development reserves of major public transportation facilities, or our major anchor institutions, particularly the Northern U Med on U A A lands. This is an overlay. The base color of the land use designation below it is the land use, so with the seafoam color of the airport, applies in those areas, even where you see the tartan pattern over the coastal trail and other areas, and the dark blue pattern of U A A applies underneath the tartan pattern of Northern U Med. It describes a, a, a pattern of development that attempts to incorporate the, the environmental feature below it. Also, that's described. Quickly ending up, the residential mixed-use district, or, excuse me, residential mixed-use growth-supporting feature is identified on your map with a white dot-stipple pattern. The white dot-stipple pattern, it appears in certain parts of the map. For example, for those of you who recognize where we are on the map, just south of us here are the archive site, is a dark brown, but it has some white dots over it. That's just north of Tudor Road. There are other areas with that stipple pattern over the browns, dark and medium browns. That identifies mixed-use residential areas where mixed-use commercial is allowed. These areas are still recommended to require residential use and development, but it allows a lot of commercial development with that. Where the stipple pattern overlays the pinks and the purples, for example, you'll see it in the south part of downtown, right above that green line showing the Delaney Park Strip, you'll see a lot of stipple pattern in downtown. That reflects the downtown plan's designation of that area as residential mixed use. In that area, and other areas with the purple, it's overlaying a commercial mixed-use center. In those areas, usually, the plan does not recommend we require residential, but we sure would encourage it to take place. There are a few areas where the stipple does overlay commercial mixed-use designated areas, where based on a neighborhood or district plan, even though it's pink or purple, it would recommend there be a minimum residential requirement. Were those areas to rezone from their existing residential district to a commercial or mixed-use zone that implements the pink or purple areas, and I can point you to an area if you, if you need an example. The very last feature on the map, the growth-supporting feature, is traditional neighborhood development. Appears as brown line with a, with a, a sort of a bristle, bristle pointed inwards to these areas. These, these areas outline parts of town that we've seen, observed, developed as a more traditional, older, urban development pattern, where the smaller blocks, more interconnected street networks, smaller lot pattern, and generally more opportunities for walkable development pattern. The traditional neighborhood development pattern recognizes that even though these areas have the same color of land use designation as areas outside, the more suburban areas outside of this area, that the fundamental development pattern differs greatly for the more suburban areas of Anchorage, and it seeks to enhance the development pattern, the urban development pattern of those, of those areas, because we anticipate more growth occurring there, as those types of areas, we project to become more and more desirable on the market going into the future. There are three other maps in the Land Use Plan. Beginning on page four, there is a reference to the Area-Specific Plans Map in the plan. The Area-Specific Plan Map identifies where in the bowl you will see there are existing adopted neighborhood and district plans. This, this plan builds on, and to a great extent reflects, all of those existing adopted Altogether, those plans have seventy different tailored land use designations, and the page twenty-three crosswalk table provides your crosswalk between the eighteen generalized color-shaded land use designations of the twenty-fourty Land Use Plan Map, and the more than seventy tailored designations that appear in these fourteen to sixteen neighborhood district plans. The Land Use Plan Map, even though its designations can say something different, or more generalized than these neighborhood district plans, in those areas shown on the Area-Specific Plans Map, it is asking of the reviewer, the commission, the user, the public, to refer back to those neighborhood and district plans, and what is the more tailored and specific land use category that applies in that area. There are several areas where the Land Use Plan Map recommends changes from those existing adopted land use plans, and on pages eighteen and nineteen, it describes a new map that didn't appear in your previous draft of the Land Use Plan Map project. Page nineteen shows you an Areas of Growth and Change map. Areas of Growth and Change map shows three things, and one of which is outlined in dark green, showing you where the Land Use Plan Map recommends changes from the existed, existing adopted neighborhood and district plans. This map also indicates where, based on existing zoning, land use patterns, trends, and other factors that we describe on pages eighteen and nineteen, existing adopted area-specific plans, and our own analysis for this project, where we anticipate the most growth and change to occur between now and 2040. Three shades of color, little, moderate, and significant growth. Lastly, it indicates in a pattern color where the land use designation on the Land Use Plan Map shows an allowed use that's different from what's allowed today under current zoning. The biggest example, you might look down in South C Street, you'll see some, a dot pattern in South C Street on this map. Might be hard to see, actually, the scale, and that's indicating, for example, where the Land Use Plan Map recommends areas that are currently zoned I-two, to go to a commercial land use designation. Three types of things on that Growth and Change map. Lastly, there's an, an Actions map on page sixty-seven, the very last page of the plan. The Actions map gives you the geographic visual of where many of the actions from the Actions Checklist Table, Table Four in your plan, where those are recommended to take place. It helps you identify where they would occur, especially some of these targeted area rezonings, obviously the growth, excuse me, the reinvestment focus areas, and some other features. It also kind of gives you an idea of, of where all the overlay zones and other zones that our various plans have recommended, where they overlap each other. The, the black dashed numbers on this map refer back to the, the action items in your Actions Checklist. All three of these maps as well, of course, the Land Use Plan Map are available to you in zoom-in version on the map gallery. Zoom in enough, and on each and every one of these four maps in the Land Use Plan Map, you'll be able to get down to the lot level. You know exactly where these features are, so they're all in the map gallery. Three things quickly in closing. We attempted to respond to all the comments and issues raised, and where a comment does not seem to have been addressed, or maybe it's hard to figure out where it's addressed, we do intend to provide the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public with an issue response, a comment-response paper before you begin deliberations, so it'll help document how the, how the comments and issues raised during this process were dealt with, particularly the comments you'll hear tonight, and the ones that have been coming on since we've released the public hearing draft. Secondly, a couple other things that we want to take care of with, with this commission. In addition to a, a lot of the issues that the commission anticipates addressing, we'd like to work with you on helping clarify or prioritize the action plan, Actions Checklist, that's the interest of the commission. Secondly, there were a lot of suggestions for improved photos and illustrations to help clarify the meaning, make this plan easier to read. We would like to work with you to fill those out, and you'll see photo placeholders throughout the, the plan where... where, because of time, we have yet to include those. Last... Find my piece of paper here. The land use plan map is a future-oriented, citywide plan. It's very different from a rezoning or a site review. It is very long-range, future-oriented, and it covers and impacts the entire community. So this is very different from a case where we're very concerned about exactly what happens on a specific parcel of somebody's property. When we look at this plan, we're looking out at the impacts community-wide of the decisions the Muni makes on this plan through 2040. What will our future needs be as a community overall? And so, in more than many cases, what decisions the municipality makes on this map in one area, whether to redesignate it from residential or industrial to commercial or not, this plan in particular takes a careful look at how that impacts us all in the future over the next 25 years. So it's a very, it's a kind of a, it's a great challenge to think future-oriented and community-wide for us. For example, if we do take too much land out of certain land use designations, such as into commercial, in too many areas, the cumulative effect is too many hands in the cookie jar and an erosion of our residential industrial land base. We will do our best throughout this process to help keep track of that for you because the Assembly right now is dealing with dollars budgeting. We're dealing with acres, and we're trying to keep our account balances as positive as we can for all the different land use designations and the six types of places that appear on your map, the neighborhoods, the centers and the corridors, the industrial areas and the open spaces. Mr. Chair, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Before I ask other questions, could you give me a kind of an outline of what you see as the process moving forward after public hearing? So there'd be an issue response when you would like us, at least as a target for our deliberations, if there's any work sessions that you see built into that before we're able to get this onto the Assembly?
Yes, we intend to develop and provide you with a comment-response document that responds to the issues the public's raised, also questions that the Planning and Zoning Commission may have, questions and concerns that the commissioners may have. We greatly appreciate receiving and writing. As soon as practical, that really helps us out. We provide you all with an issue response as quickly as we can prior to your deliberations, give you as much time as possible to read that before those begin, and also provide you with work session opportunities. At this point, we're at your disposal for those. The team has prepared a draft schedule of how this might play out, and I am looking at it right now to figure out where we are. Okay. So it looks like we're looking at a public hearing, obviously, tonight, and it's up to the commission whether it wishes to close that hearing tonight or continue it based on what it hears. Were it to close tonight, we would be looking at deliberations on the 7th and the 14th of November. And that would begin the deliberations portion. So we would want to get an issue response to you all well before then, either late October or early, very early in November.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Before we go to Mr. Spring and any other commissioners with some questions, and I don't want to spend too much time here, knowing that we'll have plenty of time for conversation. I want to move on to public testimony. But go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yes, I don't want to take up too much time with a public hearing, but I do have a couple of things that I think I don't expect will be brought up, or maybe they will. One of it is, I have a little trouble figuring out what parts of the existing 2020, Anchorage 2020, plan are going to be kind of set aside based on this amendment and which parts are going to be continued. And it seems like the vision is going to be still intact, more or less. The policies and other goals are going to be, remain, although there's going to be a lot of trying to decide which ones pertain to whatever project we're reviewing. What about the land, the, what is, what's it called, the planning element where you, in the 2020 plan, it estimates the number of households by subarea, and it has a lot of density in the northeast, northwest in particular? And is that still going to remain or is that thrown out since you have a new projection? I'm assuming it's thrown out and no longer relevant.
Yes, through the chair. Anchorage 2020 remains intact, and there are only a few pieces that this plan supersedes. The general relationship between the policies, there are 100 policies in 2020, and the new policies that we add, beginning on pages, page 10 of this document, page 10 through 18. So they work together. And the only two Anchorage 2020 policies that are superseded by these new policies are policies three and four of 2020. And you can see that in the left-hand column of page 11, where the new policies, numbered 1.2 and 1.4 of this plan, supersedes. Otherwise, they work together. What we've done here is we've added policies only where we're filling in the gaps that 2020 either didn't anticipate or is outdated. One of those two policies from Anchorage 2020 does refer, is the one that refers back to those growth forecasts, growth allocations from 2020. Those are superseded. And so, section 1.2 of this plan essentially is providing the updated forecast for needs through 2040. We also intend to provide the commission and the public as soon as possible with Appendix B of this plan. Forgot to mention there are appendices. It's called Feature Growth Report, which provides the background of those needs. And so, yes, the growth forecast from 2020 and the growth allocation is superseded.
That makes a lot of sense. I'm glad that was included. I didn't see that. And through the chair, one other question regarding the plan and consistency. So the elements, the plan elements, which include the section on town centers, transit-supported development corridors, those are, that map is superseded also?
Yes, through the chair, that might be a little more muddy to answer, but I think in general, it stays intact. And it stays intact at the more vision level. This plan, like many plans, you could think of this land use plan map as the missing chapter of 2020, which established its policy map with the bubbles and the dots and the key policy area concepts. And it creates a more specific, going from the vision to the blueprint, a more specific land use guidance for those. In some areas, however, South C Street, there are real differences. And where you find those differences, we can provide a more final answer to that with the comment response. But I think in those cases, for example, South C Street, Anchorage 2020 called it an industrial land, industrial reserve. Based on our analyses over the recent years, we're recommending much of that become commercial corridor. And so in that case, a commercial corridor land use designation for part of that area would apply. I can provide a, we can provide a better answer for you on that.
Yes, through the chair, just to follow up. Yeah, there's a number of town centers that are changed. The one on Dowling and Lake Otis is eliminated, or at least there's no land use designation. There's a new one added in the UMed district. The transit corridors are substantially changed. And as I didn't realize that the reserve was changed also. Seems like it's going to lead to some confusion if you have two competing maps there, but if you could respond to that, that would be good. I appreciate it.
Yes, through the chair, we will. Thank you.
I don't want to take up all the time.
You can go ahead, John. I'll cut you off when, you know, it gets old.
You've done that before, so I appreciate that. Sometimes I need that. There, I have a little problem, I guess, with commuter rail station designations, not so much the one in Ship Creek, because that's, that seems to be more or less viable commuter rail to the valley, at least in theory, could be. But I have a problem with the southern commuter rail connection from Diamond to Ship Creek with stations at, I think, Spinard and where else was there? There's a couple of stations. I don't see the viability of that at all. And I don't, and I've never seen a study that's looked at that very in-depth that would convince me that there's been the due diligence needed to put this in a plan map. I really have some doubts about that. And I would like, I guess, not necessarily to argue it here, but perhaps to get some feedback from transportation planning. They should have some idea about whether or not that is in the existing plan, whether they support it, whether it makes sense, whether there needs to be some study done before putting that in the plan. I would like some response, I guess, from the transportation planning. Also, I have some also concerns, which I'd like the transportation planning to address regarding changes to the transit-supported corridors. The one on Northern Lights and Benson that goes through town, you kind of have the midtown area designated as the transit corridor. You have another portion of a transit-supported corridor over by Boniface and Northern Lights, and then you've got another one separated over on the west Northern Lights. I don't believe there's been enough study, again, to indicate that this is a viable transit-supported development corridor, that if there is, is there opportunities to increase the densities there substantially? I don't really think there is. And if there is, does the density that you can add to that area support transit or frequent transit? And that's the key to transit development corridors, is that you have the density, especially the housing density, needed to support frequent transit usage. That route that uses Northern Lights is not one of the most productive routes, transit routes, currently. So I guess the vision is that maybe it will be in the future, but I have no idea. I don't see it. And I think that might be a waste of time and effort if we put that in there and then try to implement it. But again, I don't want to argue completely about this at this time, but I would like a response from transportation planning regarding that concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. And did you, what I was going to say, Tom, you want to respond to that before I ask another question?
Just really briefly, we do look forward to working with you on refining the commuter rail, as well as the language describing what it means. And there is interest and support in it. With respect to the new Northern Lights Transit-Supervised Development Corridor, so we have been working with transportation and also been tracking carefully with the Anchorage Track, Anchorage Talks Transit Project with our public transit planners. The Northern Lights Corridor is an outcome of their process, and they requested that it be added. And we have really focused or attempted to focus where we believe the greatest opportunity occurs on Northern Lights for transit-supported development. A lot of what's going on in Northern Lights bus corridor is about connecting midtown UMed and up the Creekside Town Center, which I believe is a lot of what's generating public transit's interest in a high-frequency transit route on Northern Lights. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just quick, I'm not going to get into specifics right now, but on the descriptions, you might have a B3 zoning district under Town Center, Regional Center, Commercial Corridor, Main Street, one zoning district. What's the distinguishing factor moving forward? So we adopt this thing, and six months from now, I own four pieces of property in each of those designations. What's different about owning that property within those designations?
Yes, there are several distinguishing characteristics, one of which is, because it's a land use plan map, it covers a bit more than zoning, so it's also seeking to look at where the municipality or the, or other entities may invest in infrastructure. Where we're looking at focusing future investments at the town center versus corridor scale. So for example, we would seek to, I know this is a poor time in history to talk about it, but locate future branch libraries or other facilities that might be more of appropriate for a center as opposed to on a corridor. So there's that aspect to it. There are also differences in character and scale. Many communities, and in some ways, the new Title 21, the Title 21, sometimes differentiate areas based on a plan, even without a differentiation in zoning. Title 21 was originally designed, so was an earlier version of this map, originally designed to provide different mixed-use zoning districts. Those were removed near the end of the process. And so in its place, Title 21 uses the B3 and differentiates certain aspects of the B3 district-specific zoning standards based on the land use plan map, such as building height and other features. Future zoning changes to the code may help differentiate these. For example, according to this draft plan, you may see a transit-oriented development overlay on some corridors or some other kind of overlay, as called for in certain neighborhood district plans, that recognizes Main Street corridors. The commercial center overlay already exists on the books, on the code. It's at the end of chapter four of Title 21. It's been sitting there. It is designed to provide more mixed-use center-oriented standards and incentives for the centers. And as you'll see on the cheat sheet, the zoning cheat sheet, as well as in the plan, you'll see CCO, Community Center Overlay, is another tool. So it's not a perfect set of tools. We're working with what we have. B3s all over town, and it's not ideal. We are trying to find ways to differentiate them appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other questions before we go to public testimony? I have a feeling we'll be having further discussion later. But at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. I'll remind everybody here that if you are an individual, you get three minutes. And you're a member of a group, five minutes. Please state your name for the record, and I will be holding people to the time. So when it does, when it goes yellow, you got a minute left.
So good evening. I'm Krista Ledes, the Associate Vice Chancellor for Facilities at the University of Alaska Anchorage. And with me is my boss.
For the record, my name is Pat Shire, Vice Chancellor for University of Alaska Anchorage.
So are we individuals or institutions?
You get five minutes.
Well, thanks for this opportunity to testify tonight, and thank you for your service to our community. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. The 2040 Anchorage Land Use Master Map and Plan is, is a complicated document. I think the update is a significant and necessary effort, and I applaud the municipal staff for, for getting underway. However, I think it's, the effort's rushed, and could be, could result in unintended consequences. I'm here tonight to testify against the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Map and Plan, in that it puts restricted, restrictions on undeveloped university land by designating them as a greenway-supported development. This overlay is not consistent with the recently approved UMed District Plan, ink still wet. The overlay is not consistently applied to other PLI owners in the UMed District, and it is not consistent with the Objective 10, Objective Number 10, for the development of the UMed District in, in the plan. We've participated in meetings, hosted a workshop, submitted comments, yet we haven't received explanations for the action that effectively takes university land. We haven't seen changes as a result of our comments, or updates, or any removal of the overlay, or more preferably removing the, the entire language of greenway-supported development. By designated the university's undeveloped acreage as greenway-supported development, the muni is restricting university's flexibility to meet its mission in future, in the future, and, and provides leverage for the community to contest development on university lands. University is already required to comply with Wetlands Regulations where they apply, Municipal Title 21, and its extensive rules, UMed District Plan, and our own master plan. And now there's yet another template or overlay put on top of, of all of that. The undeveloped university land is not public use land. It's university land meant for university purposes. This greenway-supported development described in the September version of the plan on pages forty-five through forty-seven reserves institutional property, and in my opinion, could result in litigation. I'd appreciate the municipal planning department to, at the very least, discuss with us what their deliberate use of the overlay is, or better yet, remove it from university undeveloped property, or even better yet, remove that whole, whole notion. It seems to be triply redundant, or tre-dundant, I guess. The plan is, is in very draft form. I mean, there are things that you're just seeing tonight, your comments, none of us have seen, and I guess it's not clear how long the comments are, are going to be accepted. Sounded like the first in November, and, and it's not, the timeline is, is, you know, you're supposed to make a decision prior to the, prior to, you know, any, any review. So it's unclear if we get another shot at looking at a more complete draft of, of the plan. Those are our concerns. Thanks for this opportunity to testify. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Could you spell your last name for us, sir?
Let's see. Terlides, T as in Thomas, U R L E, T as in Thomas, E S.
Great, thank you. I, I think I'll, I'll take a stab at the first question. The first question is, or I guess your last question, related to another shot at it. Clearly, the plan goes before the assembly to be adopted, and at that point, the, the assembly would be weighing this document plus any recommendations that either staff or the planning commission has at that point. So there'd be, there'd be another process at that point. What I indicated was that because it was raised due to the community council cycles not being a full month out during the public hearing, that members of the assembly had suggested that we hold written testimony deadlines, written comment deadlines open until November. So that's what I announced here tonight. But I would like to hear on your other comments, sort of response from, from staff, so that we're at least, and I do concur that there's probably a more thorough and, and a longer sit-down required, but I think I'd like a, kind of a taste of what that response sounds like here this evening.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, a response to the comment?
Yeah, I think in particular, the, the comment about the greenway-supported development, and if you, if you want to have any other comments in there about, you know, how much, there was a lot in there about whether or not, how much sitting down you did and talking through that, but could you at least respond to what that GSD delineation really means, and the assertion that it basically is taking developable lands away from the university?
Yes, and we, we do intend to continue consultation with UAA on this issue. Greenway-supported development overlays several different facilities in town, and its intent is to be consistent with the intent of the UMed Plan and the UAA Master Plan with respect to, to development character that, for lack of a better phrase, forwards UAA but continues its theme as a university in a forest. And, for example, on the south side of the UAA, UAA cafeteria, there's Chester Creek in development there, surrounding the creek, but it builds around the forest character. And so that, that, at the very least, we could clarify that. However, I'd like to withhold further response and, and focus this evening on listening to comments. Thank you.
Okay, and just to be clear, as I look at the greenway-supported development corridors in, in most other parts of the plan, they truly are corridors, but what is, what is, what the testimony is from UAA related to the UMed is it's basically a large chunk of the campus itself. Could I just understand why, you know, that to me isn't a corridor, it's an entire area. So what's, is the intent that you want to suggest a corridor within that, or just, you know, it just is, it seems different than suggesting the one that you described in earlier, which was the Fish Creek Corridor, which clearly is an east-west connector versus acres of, of land?
Yes, pages forty-five through forty-seven describe greenway-supported development, and the first section, forty-five, mid-page through, mid-page and forty-six, does describe those corridors. The second section, beginning mid-forty-six, describes the greenway-supported development, GSD facilities and institutions, and so that's describing where it overlays development reserves, particularly in areas that the community has in previous plans, 2020 and others, has identified an area as kind of a natural assets hub. A lot of natural assets come together in these areas. They have a lot of features of value, and the idea is, yes, that some parts of this area might be leftover corridors or green belts, but the area would be developed. It would just be developed with a character that responds to the forest setting, and that in some way provides contiguous, contiguous greenway connections through it for wildlife or what have you, possibly centered on A, parts of B wetlands that are in these areas.
So I, I think there's a further explanation coming your direction before we deliberate, but thank you for your testimony here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a few seconds. I fully support what Chris has said, but just would reiterate, our preferred solution is to relieve that property of its greenway overlay, keeping in mind that the university has done a great deal of work to become a, a treed campus, coveted award among campuses for eight years running now. We, we have a history of really being thoughtful about being very walkable. I invite any one of you to come to our campus and see what we've done to do that. And as you also stated, there are other regulations that supersede this in terms of wetlands, et cetera, that should do a good deal to protect that, that interest. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you for your testimony here this evening. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Craig Driver with the Alaska Mental Health Trust Land Office, representative for the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority. I'd like to comment on the parcels owned by the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority, located just north of the parcel they were just discussing, be the northwest corner of Braga and Northern Lights. I did submit some written comments to the link provided in the email notices. Our holdings in this location consist of approximately seventy acres surrounding the Whaley School. Whaley School is located on Nickel Street. The area is bounded by Twentieth Street on the north, Braga to the east, Northern Lights to the south, and to Kishla Park on the west. The lands are predominantly zoned PLI and have been used for programmatic and charitable purposes for decades. The exception to that would be the approximately twelve acres on the, on the intersection or adjacent to the intersection and along both Braga and Northern Lights, and that's currently vacant. The LUPM map has proposed our lands as a, as both university or medical center on the western portions, and then the eastern portions as urban residential high density or high intensity. That's on the east side, and then there's several other overlays, including the greenway-supported development overlay and the transit-supported development overlay, which I believe is along the, it may be along both Northern Lights and Braga, but at least appears to be on the Braga side. We're open to exploring these uses, but there are physical constraints on these parcels that include existing buildings, access challenges. The entire area is served by one signal at Twentieth Avenue and Northern Lights currently. We plan on approaching the muni and other jurisdictions about increasing the access to that area. In addition to those challenges, we have overhead power lines that traverse critical areas of the site, predominantly just west of Braga, running north and south, and you can see those traverse the same area that they've talked about. We also have several segments, I should say many segments, of the Chester Creek pathway system that would require relocation to allow for development of this type. And then the potential, I don't know quite how to say this in this forum, but the, the potential construction or not being constructed of the northern extension roadway south of this intersection, that would dramatically impact transit-supported development. It would dramatically impact supportive housing for the UMed District. If you can't get to the UMed District from these locations, it's hard to provide transit-oriented development or supportive development if you can't, can't quite get there. So I think that's a big unknown, which would impact the type of development that, that these parcels ultimately become. These issues and the overall size of the land, of the site, probably lend themselves more to a horizontal mixed-use approach that would allow for compatible uses proposed in the LUPM, but could also include separate footprints of strictly commercial buildings as opposed to, as I understand it, in the high-intensity or urban residential high zone that would be limited to first-floor commercial. The outcomes resolving some of these issues that I've mentioned, or development challenges I've mentioned, could very well change the overall feasibility of the specific proposed And the existing PLI zoning and existing buildings and leases that control the land currently require some thoughtfulness to flexibility on how these lands are used and developed in the future. So we respectfully request the following. Flexibility in how those proposed zones are applied to the existing structures and future uses of those structures, given the current PLI zoning. Flexibility in how the proposed boundaries of these zones are applied to the mental health parcels. In other words, an arbitrary line drawn today that says everything east of that should be high-intensity housing, everything west of that should be university or medical district is, as I said, arbitrary today, so we don't want to be handcuffed to, to those uses if we, if we can do them in a different way. And then the last option would just be to develop compatible uses for many of these zones across the parcels within the overall footprint, and I don't know how that fits within, within the zone designations that are available, but that would be our, our request. We're available to discuss more specific resolutions with respect to these comments, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. Could you spell your last name for me?
Driver, D R I V E R.
Thank you, and I have a Tom Davis, and then a commissioner in the queue. Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Just a point of information, the, it should have been clearer in the draft, however, the, the, the description of the mixed use, it should have clarified that horizontal mixed use is totally acceptable, and that parts of the master-planned area could be all commercial and other parts residential. We intend to make that clarification with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spring, were you in the queue?
Well, I guess I would like to, I'm, I'm not sure you said this or not, what would you prefer to have it designated in that area, or just remain PLI, is what I'm assuming?
We're supportive of mixed-use development on those parcels and, and would encourage it. We're just, I'm not familiar enough with these other designations that you have to pick and choose and decide what we'd want. We just want that flexibility. We don't want to be bound by, by an arbitrary line on a, on our parcels, given the, the overall footprint, the adjacency to the major employment centers, the major educational institutions, including hospitals. We have Alaska Regional to our north, we have Providence to our south. So there's just a lot of unknowns that, as we unwind these things over time, they're going to take time. The power lines will most likely be relocated or buried, but if they remain where they are, four-story or five-story residential buildings with restaurants on the, on the first floor do not fit within the footprint of that, of those parcels, given the constraints of the power lines. I would imagine some type of a mixed use.
So you aren't against residential as part of that mixed use necessarily, just as not, it's not required to be part of a ground-floor retail with residential above it?
We may even provide some of that, but, but to, to think that we might do twenty acres of that in that particular footprint of the overall development site is pretty, it's just hard to predict, and it's, it doesn't seem feasible. I'm not familiar with too many mixed use, or I should say multifamily projects in the entire Anchorage Bowl that would be that large. So I think history would show that it's going to be hard to be an economical or economically feasible plan for, for that specific use across that entire zone on the east side.
Does that answer your question, or?
I think so, thank you.
We're flexible, I guess, is, is the idea, but we, we need flexibility.
I, I guess I would only add, maybe a question for staff. Tom, I know you have a, and we heard about it from UAA, perhaps not glowingly, but you have a, a sort of a camper, campus master planning process that you require APU and UAA to go through that allows them some flexibility, but a process to go through. Is that, is that right?
Mr. Chair, are, are you referring to the institutional master plan process in Title 21?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's in, in code.
And I, and I don't know, I don't want to debate it here tonight, but I don't know, because you sounded like you were open to certain things, but not wishing to be constrained by a land use plan map that draws lines on a map, maybe there's something, given that you are a pretty sizable landowner in that area, some form of process that you you are a pretty sizable landowner in that area, some form of process that you would go through. I'm not sure, but it sounds like we're going to want some kind of recommendation moving forward, given what I heard were pretty real issues. So, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Yes, we anticipate that there being need to work with the landowner on a variety of infrastructure issues to support redevelopment in that area, utilities, water sewer access. This area, the actions map, section three, does identify it as a reinvestment focus area candidate, so we would be helping out a variety of ways. The plan does include the concept of a small-area plan. More than a concept, it could be a tool that, like an institutional master plan, might be a good tool to help out with that. A small-area plan is described as one of the 10 strategies in section three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
What do you got for us? You got a presentation? Do you want to give those to us, Diane, and then we can pass them along here as you're talking? We can just kind of pass them down? Might be easier? You don't trust my clock? Is that what's going on here?
I got chart change at the plating board. No way. Not after putting seven days into this, Mr. Robinson.
Is there something you'd like us to read along with as we go?
No.
Okay.
I'm Diane Holmes for the Rabbit Creek Council. Our council spent one-half of our two-hour meeting Thursday discussing part of the land use plan and about 50 hours preparing for discussion points. This is an important component element, and we request the hearing be continued and that councils be allowed to testify again for information they could not cover in their prior meetings. We trust you will read our comments, but I will summarize a few of our concerns, especially the maps, as they hold disproportionate power and are not accurate. In March, we asked that a footnote on certain maps be added because the colors can't separate all districts. A note was added for 0.23 DUA saying, "See Hillside District Plan Text." This draft does not have that note. Add it back. Do you recall an earlier rezone where the staff report said the map where zones were combined allowed a density for the parcel in question, but the Hillside District Plan text indicated otherwise? While you denied the rezone, this points to the need for the footnote. Not everyone reads the text. Likewise, the area-specific plans map shows only the Hillside District Plan is the official plan covering southeast Anchorage, but the Potter Valley Land Use Analysis, also an adopted plan, has specific conditions for the many HLB parcels in our area. In fact, it was used recently to augment an HLB replat because it had greater specificity. Please add it back in. The Buildable Land Supply Map is of particular concern. The wrong map from the Hillside District Plan was used. 5.8 is the correct one. And the legend colors environmentally unconstrained parcels in purple. Clearly, this is a mistake because the former legacy point in purple is considered number-one private wetlands according to the Great Land Trust. The Growth and Change Map misidentifies an HLB parcel in the Potter Valley Road hairpin curve as residential. The Potter Valley Plan says otherwise. In the upper Potter Valley and the former legacy point lands, the map pattern should show limited growth, not moderate, due to the wetlands, steep slopes. Change but keep the dot pattern indicating future rezones. Map LU2 shows hundreds of blue-colored parcels on the hillside with the legend stating these are public institutional-use lands. Clearly, this is wrong. The zoning map has multiple concerns, one being the R3 zoning for South Point, which is already being developed at a different density, and another being R3 designation for the GCI parcel in the north part of Potter Creek. The Parks and Open Space Map has several mistakes and is deficient, showing greenbelt corridors, which are advocated for in 2020 and the Parks Plan. The Community Natural Assets Map, not all city park trailheads are shown. Wetlands don't match the city wetlands map. Watershed recharge area should be added, at least for the hillside. And Potter Marsh is a valued asset at its tributaries. Hazard Mitigation Map, show coastal areas subject to rising sea levels, such as Ship Creek. Now, three of our many comments. Page 11, gold 1.4. 2020's Policy 4 should not be superseded by the land use plan. 2020 was clear the land use plan would be consistent with neighborhood and district plans. Giving or overriding authority to the land use plan would be a violation and especially problematic, given its greater map scale and potential conflicts. Page 65. Regarding parks for potential nomination to full dedication status? Remove potential. We need all of our parks dedicated. Page 26, last point. Delete the second half of the sentence that would allow three DUA on half-acre lots in our area. We know of nowhere where this would be advisable, given our drainage, slopes, and soils, unless this refers to the Hillside Conservation Subdivision Method of Development. If designated, however, at half-acre, make that the minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Are all of the issues you brought up in the letter submitted by Rabbit Creek Community Council? They're all in there?
Yes.
Specific citations on the maps and everything?
Right, the ones that I just briefly went over in part, but we, of course, did not. We didn't get to all of the comments that we had extracted for discussion at our meeting. We could only discuss the maps and oh, half a dozen of the comments in the hour that we spent.
Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Does this mean we can use Elmo again?
Say that again?
Does this mean we can use Elmo again?
Oh, the projector, is it not working tonight? It's not working? But you wanted to...
Does this mean we can bring a thumb drive then in the future?
Really? Does it work? Yeah, for what it's worth. You can bring your own laptop and display it in all of its clarity in those screens. Come ahead of time and we'll make sure it works. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave Leclaire, L.E.C.L.A.I.R. I'm with Cargasting Properties. I came here to talk about Huffman Town Center primarily. We, my company owns a lot of real estate that's been developed in that area. And the Town Center concept is going to require transitioning the current zoning to new zones. On page 32 of the draft land use plan, there are four possible zones shown for Town Centers. Of the zones contemplated, we prefer Zone B3 for Huffman Town Center. My second comment on the Town Center is for Huffman is that there's a large Greenway Supported Development shown on the 240 land use map, and we're not exactly sure what this is or why it was there. Staff has explained a little bit of that tonight, and that's been somewhat helpful, but, you know, it's fully-developed real estate, there's no green that I, you know, really that you could see anywhere, and we're not sure quite what the implications of that would be. If it has anything to do with Furo Creek, we don't think it's located correct either. We believe Furo Creek flows on the south side of Huffman Road, not on the north side of Huffman Road. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll be sure to get those issues addressed.
Good evening. My name is Claire Waddup, W.A.D.D.O.U.P. I'm a member of the HAND Commission, the Housing and Neighborhood Development Commission, and I'd like to just make a few comments. The HAND Commission appreciates that the municipality of Anchorage is getting back on track with land use planning in the community with the revision of the land use map. As representatives of the community with interest in meeting the needs of homeless and low-income citizens, which I haven't heard mentioned this evening, the HAND Commission would particularly like to encourage you to think about the following as you make your deliberations. We'd encourage you to ensure that all housing developments include affordable and low-income residences and that these residences have easy access to public transportation routes, routes, sorry. Prioritize where possible, infill housing near services and jobs to provide easier access for residents who do not have cars. You've been talking a bit about transportation routes this evening. Those are critical to people who are low-income and don't have their own transportation. Incorporate where possible local neighborhood priorities, especially greenbelt and recreational space. That's something that Anchorage is renowned for, is having lots of green space. We encourage you to maintain that. Encourage businesses to establish a presence in the areas with a dense population. Increase the density of multifamily housing to provide units for the protected classes, particularly minorities and people with disabilities. For any housing developments in residential areas, we would encourage you to have the following recommendations implemented to avoid neighborhood opposition. Encourage community councils to find out about the Fair Housing Act. Encourage community councils to find out about the need for and benefits of more group housing, supportive housing, and rental housing. Promote supportive housing proportionate to the need of the community and examine areas in the municipality where processes impede access to fair housing. And we would certainly suggest that you encourage the municipality to take measures to prevent a further delay of 20 years until the next revision of land use planning in the municipality. So the HAND Commission thinks that incorporating these elements will propel Anchorage towards a fairer distribution of housing access and will make the municipality a city of the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, Christopher Constant, Fairview Business Association, past president, Fairview Community Council. I hadn't intended to speak, but I just heard a discussion about the Fair Housing Act, and I want to bring attention to this body in the land use planning process that, basically to the north of the Chester Creek, we have a disproportionate impact on the community of supported and low-income housing and projects of that nature, that in 2015, the US Supreme Court ruled in the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs versus the Inclusive Communities Project, that it is in fact unconstitutional to drive all of your low-income or poverty-based or service-based housing into one area because it creates a disparate impact on those people. It is in fact a violation of their rights to concentrate them. And so while I agree with the woman who just spoke from the HAND Commission that we need to remove barriers, what we need to do is actually move these services all across the municipality and distribute them equitably so that we don't actually create ghettos that trap people into poverty, because we've actually done that by policy over the last 40 years. And it's not so easy to see the impact of a decision today, what happens in the next five years, but if you look at the course of history, we have really managed to create a terrible disproportionate impact. And so I just challenge you in your deliberations to find ways to make it more equitable geographically as well. Thank you.
I've got a question for you from Ms. Bailey. Go ahead.
Are there specific recommendations that you think would alleviate that concern?
Yeah, I would suggest, look at your map. Map out your supported housing units or subsidized housing units. I've seen maps like this. And then find the areas on the map that don't have those. And of course, tied to transit and grocery stores, make recommendations that all of those areas across the town share in the impacts, instead of just coming up with one area. We've seen a tremendous amount of crime and other issues that have evolved in the downtown district from South Edition all the way through Mountain View because of these concentrations of poverty and low income. And while people in South Anchorage say, "We don't want that in our neighborhood," we need to break it up because the community will be better served if we are able to provide services across town. And it's not just services for people coming out of jails or inebriates, it's youth group homes that can't get housed in neighborhoods because of neighborhood resistance. You know, it's senior housing projects that could be distributed across the municipality. But the downtown district has seen a very disproportionate share of these types of housing programs. I mean, it's just undeniable if you look at a map.
I appreciate it. I just, I think Ms. Bailey's comment is we don't have anything in here that defines supportive housing. We have a density range in a type of housing.
Right.
In fact, you could argue that it would be a fair housing violation to actually tell us where to put those. So your testimony is, we have a policy in Anchorage 2020 that says those uses are to be distributed. That policy I heard earlier is not going away.
Right.
But you're not going to see it shown on a map.
And I'm just here to reinforce the conversation because I just heard somebody say we do...
So, okay, very good. But there's nothing in this plan map that says
I agree.
Because you see high-density, there's supportive housing going here, low-income housing.
And I believe and fully support the high-density development, especially in the downtown areas that are supportive of that, but it shouldn't be with the idea of, let's create more supportive housing units there. It should be, let's let the market define where people can choose and let's have market-rate housing, you know, with our mixed-use developments in the downtown corridors that can support that. Otherwise, it will be forever the same. You know, it's a policy that created it.
That answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, everybody. My name is S.J. Klein. I'm a former Fairview Community Council president also, but I'm here representing myself personally as a property owner in Fairview. I own both commercial and residential properties. So mercifully, just forcing three minutes on you. So I would like to commend Tom Davis and the rest of the planning staff. They've done an incredible job of taking some very, some competing interests and extremely varied plans that exist already and bringing them together into one document. There are three issues that I'd like to bring your attention to that are of direct impact on me as a property owner. The first has to do with the transit-supported corridors and especially the one along 15th and DeBarre that goes through Fairview and South Edition. While the plan as written, I guess, the plan as written tries to thread a very fine needle where transit-supported corridors call for a specific amount of density, and these different neighborhood plans in the area call for varying densities throughout various areas. And I just see there being a real opportunity for somebody, for a camel's nose to kind of come in and basically set a neighborhood plan aside because this transit-supported corridor language exists. And there are other ways around that. One has to do with how overlays are handled in the new land use plan map as well. So those are two issues that are kind of a big deal for me, and I'd like to make sure that the plans that exist already and that come forward in the future are accommodated with that. The last thing is a gigantic omission on this map. You'll notice the one big white dotted line that exists between the Glen and Seward highways. The omission that exists is that there's nothing really calling out what that is in terms of... There's a big mess in our future and that is, that's a transportation disaster that exists in planning with DOT. And sort of to have this dotted line without some sort of call-out, you know, there's sort of an omission for a special study area. We're kind of, basically this land use plan map throws its hands up in the air and says, "We don't know what we're going to do with this area." And that's okay, which I think is a major oversight and, or at least a major omission in the plan. And I would like to see that remedied, so.
S.J., hold on. The big dotted line, what are you, where are you at?
Okay, so if you look in... Okay, you can't really see it very well. It's covered on this thing right now. But if you look where Fifth and Sixth Avenue turn into Ingrah Gamble and there's sort of a fat... If you go to the actual land use plan map, the physical one, the large copy, and you look in that section, there's a big dotted line because of all the various alignments that exist in DOT documents for potential alignments for a Glen-Seward connection. Right now, it's on the Glen, right now it's Ingrah and Gamble. Potentially in the future, it could be an alignment along Hyder. And so, I mean, what planning was attempting to do was say, "Okay, there's a lot of stuff going on here and we have no idea what it's going to look like into the future." From a developer's standpoint, you look at this and you say, "That's a big mess and I have no desire to go anywhere near it." So, you know, one way to remedy that is to actually have language in the narrative that calls for a special study area. And it's something that, as a neighborhood, we've been pushing for for a long time.
Specifically of the Gamble and the corridor?
Yeah.
I got a question from John Spring. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I know it's been a problem for Fairview for a long time.
And this isn't my first time bringing it in front of this body.
I think they tried to word this to say that this is just illustrative and it doesn't really have any real impact. But maybe there's a way to finesse this a little bit better with a special study area. Because I know it does seem to make investment difficult along the Hyder corridor just because people think it's going to be taken by this road project. When in fact, this is just one of many alternatives that could be reviewed or implemented. Personally, I think that it's a $500 million project and when they redo the AMAT's plan, that they'll find, given the lack of state money, that this thing might go away. On the other hand, another part of the Fairview, which I'd like your comment on, is the, I guess it's the Main Street corridor on Gamble. And in my opinion, I don't know if it's your opinion or not, but that relies on DOT accepting the reduction from four lanes to three lanes so you can actually build a main street and have sidewalks. Is that, do you think, that also needs study, correct?
Yeah, there's, the language would help us in our fight for a number of issues related to the corridor. And that's, I think that's why it warrants some special study. And so, yeah, I would request that it be an action item on the list.
I agree with that. Tom Davis and then Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chair. First, just a point of information. The dashed line depicting a potential highway-to-highway alignment has been relegated to page 49 of the plan. It's an inset map. There's a couple of other projects there. They appeared on the main map at the previous draft. We removed them. Some in the public found them confusing on the main maps, so we put them there.
That's why I couldn't find it. It's not on there anymore. So they listened, kind of.
But it...
Sorry, Tom.
Sorry. Secondly, the Gamble Street and other parts of Fairview west of Gamble appear on the actions map and in Section 3 as a reinvestment focus area. And so there's certainly potential in the plan to address this issue. And in the actions checklist, you will see in under Goal 6, Section 6 of the actions checklist, there are transportation-related actions that affect land use and so they're certainly in the scope of the plan, ways to address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
We spent a lot of time talking about the highway-to-highway thing, but what, just real quick, what camel are we worried about sneaking its nose under the tent here?
Oh, speaking of the transit-supported corridors, I guess the issue with transit-supported corridors as defined, there's a, at least in, I guess I'm not completely up to date with the language in the version that's in front of you. But as I understand it, transit-supported corridors call for a fairly wide swath, I believe it's a quarter-mile, of high-density development. Our neighborhood plan, and I know a number of other plans in the works along the 15th stretch, kind of call for concentrating development within certain areas and then leaving other areas. We have a lot of historically lower-density, single-family duplex on smaller lots with alleys and whatnot on both the north and south side of 15th. And so in our land use, in the planning map that was approved with our neighborhood plan was kind of a call for, you know, for lack of a better word, apologies to the chair, upzoning and downzoning in certain areas to allow for higher density and lower density in various areas. And I guess just knowing, knowing how some, or having seen people operate, you know, once it's set in writing and adopted as policy, you know, establishing 15th as a transit-supported corridor opens the potential for somebody to come in that, you know, say wants to buy a large number of lots and create something different than what exists in our land use plan map. And they'll be able to point to the new Lubom as kind of the justification for that change, so.
The main point is that this is different than the plan map in your neighborhood plan?
Exactly. And staff has done a really fine job trying to, as I said, thread the needle between kind of the individual desires of the neighborhoods and the larger planning map, so. But there's the potential, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Tim Potter with Dow. I'll try and be quick tonight because I know you're going to limit me to three minutes. I'd like to go through a number of site-specific locations and comment and make some recommendations. Starting from the south, 100th and C Street. Appears as if the city is going to do that as an area-wide type rezone. So it takes a significant number of acres and parcels and actually makes the transition via the Assembly action, hopefully with the final adoption of the plan, that that area becomes a rezone and then the plan gets implemented automatically. Second site is Dowling and Lake Otis. If you look at Lake Otis, the north side of Dowling, from Lake Otis going west is identified as commercial. Then just before you get to Petersburg, which is the first street west of Lake Otis, there's a piece of industrial. That entire strip is owned by one party and it is undeveloped at this time. And Petersburg on the west side acts as a primary access to the residential area to the north. And we'd like to see that go to commercial rather than industrial as it's really a key focal point and entryway into a larger residential development. And it doesn't make sense to me from a planning standpoint to have that be bookend by industrial. Tudor and Piper. Just a question and clarification, I guess I'd like the staff to respond to the comment in their comments later. The UMed district plan, the Assembly specifically took the corner, the northwest corner of Tudor and Piper, and identified that as commercial. And now it has come back before the ink's even really dry on the UMed district plan. And it is a white stipple on darker brown to be a mixed residential, or residential mixed-use. With comments made tonight by Tom Davis that would strongly recommend that any rezone that would come forward to go do a project on that site would incorporate some kind of residential. That was fully discussed at the Assembly. I think it was addressed by the Assembly. And this seems like a very quick turnaround to now superimpose a redo on a plan that was just adopted that's supposed to take and be the direction for that area. So I'd like that addressed. DeBarre-Northway Mall on Business Park Boulevard and the Northway Mall, that area is for the most part zoned industrial, I-1. It likely should be an area-wide as well. It's a large item and because of the changes between the industrial previous and now, that would have some impact. There is a little strip of our ozone property on the south side of Third Avenue between Ingrah-Gamble. They're very small, minimum-size lots developed off of an alley. The property to the south is B3. And looking at the single-family cottages that are there and the condition that they're in and knowing the owner of three of those, they are basically in a situation where it's too small to try and redevelop because of the value of the buildings that are there, even though they're rundown. And because of the adjacent development, nobody's really interested in trying to do an office or higher-density residential in that location. So it looks like to me it would be better to consolidate that into the commercial area and let possibly some larger mixed-use developments happen. Next item on the list, the RFAs or your reinvestment focus areas. I just really would like to make sure that the Planning and Zoning Commission confers with the staff to determine what kind of feasibility analysis has actually gone into identification of those areas. Because if that's where we're going to spend our money for reinvestment and direct developers to do reinvestment and invest there, is the infrastructure and the other costs associated with development, are we getting the community's biggest bang for the buck? Next point, I'd strongly recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission and its staff consider or reconsider a recommendation that would create a stormwater utility. And I would hope that after my next comment, someone will ask a question after my testimony on that. And lastly, implementation. There are a few identified areas for an area-wide immediate action to impose the new implemented zoning. However, we're looking at an awful lot of parcels in town that are identified or designated to be changed to something other than they're currently zoned. And one of the big uphill battles as far as implementation for any city plan is to actually move those properties towards an updated zoning character that will allow them to be developed. The cost, the time delays associated and the brain damage associated with pursuing many rezones is really a disincentive for someone to try and bring that into implementation.
I think you got a question for you. Mr. Walker.
Tell me about stormwater utilities.
Well, I grew up in a town called Bellevue, Washington. And about the time I left for college, they started a stormwater utility. They were one of the first in the nation. And as I go through the 2020 plan and the plans before that and now the 2040 plan, there's a lot of things talking about preservation of open space, habitat, green space corridors, keeping water quality high, all those things, quality of life. And one of the biggest things that I've seen that actually has a positive impact is a stormwater utility. At this time, we have basically two stormwater facilitators or agencies in town, one being the State of Alaska DOT and the other is the municipality of Anchorage. DOT puts storm drainage in based on its road surface, not for servicing the adjacent properties. So that means either some people don't develop their properties or they have to spend a lot of money doing a parallel system to get the water that they're running off to the street to go to the right place in the right-sized pipe. It seems like it would be much more effective and efficient to have a common utility, then have charges for all the users in town, and that means all of us. And that creates a revenue stream. Right now, our drainage improvement comes out of roads and drainage bonds on an inconsistent basis, not marked towards an asset management approach at all. And I'm a firm believer that natural systems are always better than man-made systems. Number one, Mother Nature designed them in a way that they actually work. Gravity has been proven to work for a long time and it still does. And sadly, we haven't done our planning in this city and most cities around gravity and drainage. But with that in mind, there's still time to have a revenue base that goes into development of new drainage improvements, can actually go in and retrofit or maintain some of them that we actually have. We can have common planning between DOT's interests and city interests. And then we have a side pot of revenue. In the old days, in the early 80s, if you had a preservation wetland on a piece of property that you were going to replat, it had to be tracted out as a common-interest-type tract. And then the city had an appraisal done and acquired it from you. The money dried up, that program went away for whatever reason, mostly because there wasn't funding or the real interest in doing that. A utility would create a fund that could be used to purchase wetlands, which serve as storm drain systems, flood attenuation, water quality benefits, habitat corridors, open space, all the things that we say that we want to have and we want to be from a quality-of-life standpoint. That would give us a fund that would be designated directly for that. I can envision that we would be purchasing wetlands, we'd be purchasing stream-setback corridors, we'd be doing all kinds of things. When we go to APU or UAA and try and demand through a taking, that they provide all the things that all the neighbors would love to have. Now the neighbors actually have a fund and the community who says they want these things can pay for those things. I'd also envision that...
You got to wrap up, Tim.
That in the future, we'd actually have tracking of, in the streams in town, the last green belt area that was actually really acquired on a planned basis was Campbell Creek. And trails were put in in that area and the city used money by the city to purchase those. I'd love to see also a chunk of money that can be then planned for giving first-rider refusal deals to some properties that are currently got residences too close to the creeks and drainages to resolve flooding issues. And when they sell or they pass on, first-rider refusal goes to the city to purchase it at fair market value. And over time, we can actually create and resurrect a natural systems, for the most part, hybrid that addresses an awful lot of issues that are pointed out in the con plan. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify? Who else is going to testify here this evening? John, you going to go too?
Alan Kemplin, K-E-M-P-L-E-N, Fairview Community Council. I'm currently serving as Vice President of the Council. I hope, I just want to make sure that Planning and Zoning Commission members pay attention to the comments that were submitted by the Council. About 10 pages worth of comments. They're pretty substantive, addressing a myriad of issues. And we've had a very robust discussion of this project. We've followed it for the past 18 months. Our community council members have participated in the public workshops, followed along as it's gone through its development cycle. We do have some concerns about the final product that's out for your review and consideration. The western section of Fairview is identified as a reinvestment area and anticipated to absorb some fairly high density. But the, one of the things that we've experienced in Fairview, we have a lot of R3, you know, R4... R4 zoning, is that just because you have, you know, higher density, doesn't necessarily mean that a landowner is going to develop to that density. There is, is a function of, you know, the market and financing, what's available to a developer, what are they going to, how are they going to pay for their project. An important point to make is that this type of high-density, really, particularly in urban, you know, core area, it requires, for market-rate housing, you need amenities to go along with it. We don't have amenities currently in Fairview. We are on a per capita basis. We are below standards for access to open space, access, easy access to greenways and trails. So, you know, expecting to, you know, the private sector to come in and, you know, and provide a lot of market-rate, you know, housing while not having amenities to support that, you know, that market niche is stretching it a little bit. It's one of the reasons, if you look at the housing analysis that was done in 2012, the consultant stated that if you want to have this type of development in an urban area, you, one of the things that's missing in Anchorage area, you need a main street. That's one of the, you know, core components, is a main street. That's what creates walkability, that creates a destination, it creates a sort of the streetscape environment that attracts people with disposable income that can afford market-rate, you know, housing. It's one of the reasons why in the Fairview Neighborhood Plan, you know, we've been pushing and advocating, it's one of our vision for revitalization, is the conversion of Gamble into our main street. And it's one of the reasons why, you know, we continue to advocate for that and move for that. And want to point out that, you know, we don't have to create, convert every single arterial street in the municipality, you know, for automobiles, right? The Land Use Plan Map and the narrative has a lot of discussion about people and about doing things that are supportive of people. And it emphasizes, you know, Fairview as, you know, walkable, small blocks. But, you know, we've been torn apart by these arterials, 5th and 6th, you know, Gamble and Ingrah. And it was only when the municipality took over 15th, that arterial, they were actually having to have a good design and a complete streets design, which I think was the first complete streets design in the municipality, the most successful, you know, one. And I don't think you see it replicated anymore. And why? Because the municipality has not taken over control over those arterial sections. If you want to be serious about your primary transit corridors and putting in, making them more people-friendly, the municipality has to have ownership of that arterial road. So, in summary and conclusion, I'd just like to encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to pay attention to our comments and our requests and our written submission, and that you continue the public hearing for another meeting to give an opportunity for people to weigh in. We had a lot of people who wanted to weigh in, but they could not because of the short timeframe. And so there it is, five minutes. So, thanks.
Mr. Kemplin, can I ask, you spent some time talking about the main street corridor on Gamble. That is the current designation in the plan, is it? That's right? So you're just sort of supporting that designation, is that right?
We're supporting that designation and calling out that it's, it's important if the Land Use Plan Map is going to actually be able to achieve the reinvestment that it's for West Fairview, you've got to have supplemental, you know, investment strategies that move forward concurrently.
You want the designation and the implementation of it, is what you're talking about?
Yes, absolutely. So, if you're going to give us the high-density, you're going to make us a reinvestment, but if you don't give us a main street, you're not going to get the market-rate housing, you're not going to get the quality investment that we need. And you won't attract the housing units that this community so desperately needs.
Great. Thank you for your testimony.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else wishing to testify? Like you two are just waiting to be the last word, it's, you know. Although John's going to upstage you all, he's sitting over there quietly.
I know, he's stealth. Okay. Hang on.
If you think you're going to read all that stuff in three minutes, Kathy, come on. Are they all the same? Okay.
Chair and members of the commission, I'm Kathy Gleason, I'm currently serving as Vice President of Turnigan Community Council. Thank you for listening to public input this evening on this important land use plan. Want to thank the Planning Department for all their hard work. We spent a lot of time reviewing the community review draft of the plan and the map, and unfortunately, we haven't had much time to really dig in and compare that to the public hearing draft. So what you've got, this flood of paperwork attached with a nice colored delegator clip, is kind of a summary of some of the things that really stood out to us, even though we, our comment letter, which is the next document from, on the community review draft, we commented on other things as well. Also included in the packet is a map from an ordinance that was passed in 2001 with regard to Turnigan Bog, and also our comment letter on the attempt to update the land use plan from 2005, 2006 timeframe. So Turnigan has been looking at these for a long time, we've invested a lot of time, provided a lot of comment, which has been very consistent with regard to parcels in and around the airport in particular. Before I get into that, if that's even possible, I was, I'm the Federation of Community Council Turnigan Delegate, and I was of yes vote on requesting that the comment deadline be extended to November 1st. I'm glad to hear that happened, but I didn't realize that until tonight. So we're doing our best to cover our bases, and if we have a chance, we'll submit more comments by the first. It is unfortunate that we did not get from the Planning Department before we were asked to comment on this public hearing draft, our comment response to our comments. It would have made our ability to kind of respond to this second draft a lot easier to see what really there are issues the Planning Department has with some of our recommendations. And that would still be really helpful before, before the final deadline for us to submit We are opposed to a key component of the West Anchorage District Plan. We were opposed to it during the development of that plan, and that's the comprehensive land use, excuse me, comprehensive land swap with the airport, the muni and the airport. And so even though that's part of the district plan that then is now reflected in this land use plan, Turnigan Community Council has always been opposed to that, and it's unfortunate that it got included in the West Anchorage District Plan, and our comments with regard to the land use map and narrative within this public hearing draft reflects that continued I did not have extra copies of a hazard mitigation and resiliency map that was not provided on the map gallery at the time that we were trying to pull together information. But I think that's something you really, really need to refer to in terms of areas that are high hazard or very high hazard seismically within the airport property, and then how they should be reflected in a land use map. I think that's really important. Also, the flood planes are in that same map, so especially with regard to Turnigan Bog, Hood Creek area within airport boundaries, the map should reflect appropriate land use and designation in those areas. Okay, with regard to some of the specifics-
You're under a minute.
Okay, thank you. I encourage you to please read our comment letter that we submitted on the community review draft. Our quick analysis of the public hearing draft was that not very many of our comments were taken into consideration, and the public hearing draft has not been modified to reflect a lot of our input. So we hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission considers our input and it more reflects our long-held positions with regard to a lot of the land within the Turnigan Community Council boundaries, both municipally-owned land as well as airport land. But to end on a positive note, we did support a lot of what was in the plan, that's also reflected in our comment letter that's not kind of bulleted on this front page. So, thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Gleason, question for Mr. Spring.
Yes. There's a number of land use classification changes in the Turnigan Arm Community Council, particularly along Northern Lights Boulevard, I think both sides of it, around Forest Park. I'm not sure where your boundaries are exactly, but, and there's also some in that area up in Forest Park, one of which involves a mobile home park, I think. Does your community council, have they addressed these land use classification changes? Do you have any opinion about whether you support them or not? Because there's quite a few of them there.
We did not actually focus on that area. Our boundary stops at Fish Creek, south of Northern Lights, but then it extends all the way to Minnesota, north of Northern Lights. So it sounds like on Forest Park Drive, that would fall within our boundaries. We did not focus much on that. I'm not sure what's being proposed. It was kind of our general review of the community review draft that our zoning was not being changed to higher density in terms of our overall neighborhood area. So maybe you can enlighten me on kind of what some of the changes are.
There's, excuse me, through the chair, but there's just too many to go into each one of them. And that's one of the problems I've been having is, there's dozens and dozens and dozens of land use classification changes, and I'm not hearing much about that, except for Mr. Potter mentioned a few. That kind of, that kind of comment would be really helpful to me as a commission member, to know whether or not the community council supports it or the people who live there support it. I would appreciate if you did that.
Okay. I'll see if we have time. Thank you very much for pointing that out.
Mr. Walker?
I apologize. I'm trying to listen to you and read, and so you specifically marked two things here, and I guess I, I'm just going to ask you about one of them.
Okay.
So this Turnigan Bog issue. So I guess I'm not clear what it is that you're concerned about here. So they didn't designate enough of that area?
Right, especially if you look at, and it's kind of a complicated issue, so bear with me. In the community review draft, a small section of Turnigan Bog, adjacent to the Turnigan Neighborhood, was designated as a public facility slash natural area. In this new draft, it's now designated as a greenway-supported development, I believe, neither which Turnigan Community Council feels is appropriate. Turnigan Bog, what remains of it is a Class A wetland, high-value, provides lots of functions for that general area, but especially in the Turnigan area, as it all flows into and goes downstream Hood Creek through the neighborhood. It's, like I pointed out, some of the area is a floodplain, it filters pollutants, and it does provide a natural buffer between existing airport active development and operations, which are high-impact. Normally, an airport right up against a neighborhood are two incompatible land uses. But it works pretty well so far with, you know, some complaints here and there because that land has not been developed yet. And it's been Turnigan's long-held position that those wetlands should not be developed. And in fact, the Assembly in the ordinance that passed in 2001, where we referenced the ordinance and quote from it in our letter, and then the map is included in your packet, the municipality also agrees that it's a natural area that should be preserved to protect the Turnigan Neighborhood. But it is on airport properties, and that makes it complicated in terms of appropriate land use designation. In that ordinance, that map shows a much larger area of Turnigan Bog, identified by the Assembly as an important wetland area that should be preserved in the public's best interest. And so we would like the Land Use Plan Map to more appropriately identify those boundaries. Certainly, those boundaries don't even include all of the wetlands that we would prefer not to see developed. But that would be a good start for the Planning Department and for the Commission to more closely follow that map when you're designating areas that should be protected. This greenway-supported development, this new designation that the Planning Department put in this draft, doesn't really make sense because, again, our council has long-held a position since the early 1990s, we do not want any kind of trail or berm or anything up against our boundary. We want it to remain natural, undeveloped, so that the hydrology is not affected up against our boundary and that wetland area, among other reasons. But, so any kind of the word "development," greenway-supported development, doesn't make sense for that area at all. And it really should have a natural area designation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Tom Davis in the queue. Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, just referring back to John Spring's comment about changes, the Land Use Plan Map recommending changes from previous land use designations. The Growth and Change Map on page 19 and on the map gallery, which is not shown, does show where the 2040 Land Use Plan recommends changes from existing adopted plans, which for all of the Turnigan Community Council areas, the West Anchorage District Plan. So there are a couple, and you will find that one of which is the mobile home park Mr. Spring was mentioning, and that's, again, those dark green outlines on that map as you zoom in.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Gleason, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify?
I'm Cheryl Richardson. I'm here tonight representing South Edition. They worked real hard to produce comments very quickly in response to this timeline, so I was the only one from that work who could come tonight. So lucky you, I'm representing South Edition. We're greatly concerned about the rushed process that's approving this plan at this rate. We think the process should be meaningful, and I think you've heard testimony tonight, that it's hard to have a dialogue without that issue response. We're flying blind to some extent. It cuts off dialogue when we don't know the thinking back and forth. The other thing is, I don't know what the attendance was at the earlier public meetings discussing the map in September, but none of us were able to attend. And I would hope we would have at least one more public meeting to make sure all these questions are answered. Doing it in writing at this point, I don't think we're at that stage yet. We still have large questions. It feels as if, frankly, the administration is breaking trust with the public and by shortchanging this public process. One other, I'd actually like an answer to this one. It's not clear to us who benefits from this rushed conclusion. Why must the land use plan be approved by the year's end? What changes? What changes? Which development standards are so important? Which changes to warrant this rush? Switching gears, there's a whole lot to like in this land use plan. It's clear that staff responded positively to the first round of comments that came in from the community. I have a dozen pieces here that are greatly improved from the first draft, and I think have the potential to improve Anchorage and make it a better place for our kids and our grandkids. The whole piece on creating great places, it's high time we went there. Anchorage 2020 is almost 20 years old now, and now we're finally getting some direction on that. Neighborhood character, we were very happy to see neighborhood character brought up. The shared design principles are very helpful on page 25. There are traditional neighborhood design on page 47. We're looking forward to beefing that up and working with that. The phasing of growth and investment. Again, Anchorage has tended to shotgun its investments. Our CIP process, which, I'm sorry, I missed your work session today, but I know when we submit CIP, it's, again, shotgun. Who's the most powerful voice in the room that night to get their piece on the list? But now we'll have some direction so that we can contribute to these other goals. And infill of housing and redevelopment regulations, we look forward to that one, too. The, I have to compliment the level of transparency and detail in the actions checklist. And then the emphasis, last one, is on residential development. The emphasis that is being placed on residential development in the city and town centers. At the same time, we've got a couple of things we would very much like changed. We seek to delete language that might lead developers to think that provisions to consider additional heightened density in the South Edition area and in other locations will be approved as a matter of policy when this plan is adopted. Staff has set out in the action checklist a process for examining those issues, and we would like to remind you that South Edition is in the process of doing its neighborhood plan. We're delayed, but it's going to be done by 2017. We've got good guidance from staff and internally, and it's going to be a good product. And we would like that plan to determine the direction for future growth. So we do not need language that, while it says "consider" an extra story in lands close to the city center, and again, as Christopher mentioned, one of the Fairview folks mentioned, the wide swath of the transit cord is also called for higher density and heights. Okay. The last thing, real quick, the transportation issues tend to assume that we will have larger roads with more population. It's time for Anchorage to start reconsidering how we establish our transportation investments, and we would start with what kind of community we want in the future, and then work our investments from there. In the past, as was said, we've been run roughshod by DOT and their high-speed arterials, and we don't have to do that anymore. I know everybody's tired, so thank you very much for doing this, and I'll take off.
I have a question for you, Cheryl. I know you talked about the South Edition neighborhood plan, and I've been kind of flipping through some of the comments. Could you just tell me, are there any desired changes to the designations, literally the colors on the map, that you would like to direct us to from South Edition?
No. I think that's the truth. I think that's, I did not hear any. We had the map out. People are expecting higher density. Okay, I have to have a caveat. Most people don't know what's in there. The people who have been following this for months expected these changes, but I think the actual neighborhood, when the homeowners and the landowners learn about it, they may have a different opinion. But the group that's been following it for months was not surprised by the map, per se.
So a lot of the comments that I, just glancing through, have to do with how development occurs, what the roads look like, whether there's transit or not transit. It's really kind of, you can color it one way, but you can have beautiful development at 15 dwelling units an acre, and you can have really bad development at 15 dwelling units an acre.
Or eight an acre.
Exactly.
And, yeah, I think that's, I am concerned as a citizen that when my neighbors figure out what's going on, there may be some extra concerns you haven't heard about yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? What's the wish of the body? And I'm specifically looking for feedback related to, I think we've announced clearly that there's a deadline extended for written public comments, but anything, if there's a direction on the public hearing itself, I'd be open to conversation from the commission. John, you got a comment?
No, I was just going to mention exactly the same thing. There's still comments out there that we need to take in consideration in our deliberation. So obviously, we can't make any decisions until half the bat's completed, I think. So the public hearing, I think, was complete enough. I don't know if we get a whole lot more people here, if we extended it, or had a second public hearing, if that's what you mean by that.
That's what I'm looking for, is comments on the hearing itself.
I think the comments, actually, the written comments, will probably be more than enough information for us to make a decision on. And plus, there's already a big, huge packet in the appendix on like 70 pages of comments, so I think we'll be very satisfied with the feedback on that without having another public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I think I'm fine not extending the public comment period, other than, well, I'm fine not postponing and having another public hearing. I think that seems like it might be a little bit redundant, and I think we can, especially if the comments are half as thorough as Turnigan's were, so.
I think, you know, the feedback that I got, and it's just not been our practice that I know of, is the community wanting to know what staff's response is, you know, to those comments. So, you know, it's sort of, again, I heard dialogue and everything else, and maybe what's important is that it be very clear after the issue response and planning commission action that there be opportunities for, you know, explanation or dialogue or work session prior to rolling into assembly conversation, too.
Sure. You know, I think we've been through various planning exercises. How many have I been through? And typically, we rely on the issue response from staff, and we don't have a second go-round on them. It's okay if staff can do it. I mean, that's fine. They could continue the dialogue, but typically, we get the comments or we read the comments, staff responds to them, and we review that. And then we go down the list and decide which side we believe, if there's a disagreement or which side we side with. And I think it's fine that way without having another round.
Yeah. Does anyone have any sort of thoughts on, we heard from some of the institutions, some very specific responses, and at least Fairview Community Council, on land use designations, but I didn't hear a whole lot. I mean, that was to your point. And we really rely on guidance on specific land use issues. I mean, even to the extent that a lot of the comments that we have are not based on the map itself, it's based on the how we get there. And I don't know, Mr. Walker, are you going to?
Well, I was going to ask and/or suggest that I make a motion that we have another work session after we get the comments back. I think at the very least, a work session could be helpful, and if we get the support, then we do that, and if we don't, then...
I think we definitely will need that, because you'll have, I mean, Tom, what's your over-under on the issue response and document and number of pages? It's going to be lengthy.
Yes, Mr. Chair, based on past experience, it could be lengthy. I don't know how long. I'm sorry.
So we'll have that. But I've heard people's comments on the public hearing. At this point, I am going to close the public hearing. I would like to mention that the comments, written comments, and we prefer to get those detailed, you know, Mr. Potter following up with the specifics that you had are helpful to actually detail the particular place that we're talking about. I think that allows planning staff to actually say, point by point, whether they agree or not with that. And I, that goes for any, obviously, any written comments. It's helpful to just say, these are my specific comments that I'd like a response to. So with that, I don't know when we come back. It doesn't necessarily have to be rescheduled at this point, is that right? Carol or Tom, we don't schedule, we don't, we're going to postpone the meeting. Are you looking for a postponement to a date certain at this point? And if so, what date certain? 7th of November? Is that, I mean, that's the next meeting, right?
Your next meeting is either November 7th or the following Monday, which is the 14th. And so we would have to work with current planning. I'm not sure how full your agenda is for November 7th, but usually the second Monday of every month is reserved for long-range planning.
Well, here's what I, I would suggest that it get postponed to November the 7th, and it can always be postponed from the 7th to the 14th, but if there's, if there's an opportunity. What I'm worried about, and what I heard at the Assembly, is that if we don't hit the 14th, we're going to ask for a meeting on the 21st, which is the week of Thanksgiving. And I don't know what the attendance is going to be like, but I think it gets kind of difficult. So are you okay with the 7th, or are you confident we just say the 14th right now?
If you, if the comments are due November 1st, we're not sure if we can schedule a work session with you all to go through the issue response in that week span before, to prepare you for deliberations on November 7th.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Bailey for a comment. Go ahead, Danielle.
I first just want to thank this long-range planning committee for what was, I think, overall, was the outreach and getting people involved was great. But I think where I'm seeing the problem is just, while they've reached out and gotten comment, kind of every step along that way is, it's felt a little rushed, and I'm worried that by having comments due at November 1st, that's not that far out from now anyways. And so I'm not sure if we have the ability to extend out those comments a little longer and extend out the time we have to meet, rather than trying to rush this process one more time, because that seems to be where we're getting into the problem of not really have enough time to look at these items in detail. So that's my main concern. I'm not sure.
No, and I hear you, Ms. Bailey, and I'll, you know, I guess I'd just advocate for, I work best under a deadline, and I think we're really at the point that until we start to see those issues flushed out for us, by, what staff's going to do is go through those volumes of things and collate the issues by the issue regardless of who it sort of comes from. And that starts to make our job a little bit more manageable. And so I think the sooner we kind of get to that point, the more we can start dealing with those issues at hand. So while I hear you, I think the real question is, do we actually get through enough to deliberate on the 14th? I'm frankly doubtful at this point, but we can try for it. So with that, Mr. Walker, you want to pick the 14th for a date to postpone to?
Sure.
So motion to postpone the land use plan map to November 14th, seconded by Mr. Cange. Any opposed? So hearing none. The case is moved to November the 14th. We'll expect a land use plan map issue response at least a week before then. Please, go ahead, Hal.
Just want to make sure if I was hearing everything. Are we keeping, we keeping any of the public comment open between now and the 14th?
Written comments are open between now and the 1st.
The 1st.
Yep.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, I will double-check, and I, you know, forgive me if I'm not as up on these procedural issues that I should be, or you may be, but we'll double-check and make sure that extending a written comment period doesn't also require the commission to keep the hearing open as well. We'll double-check that. I wish I were certain of the answer yes or no.
Yeah, that would've been good to know. I mean, in which case, I'd rather we deal with the hearing on the 7th and then the 14th for any open, you know, so I want to make sure we get that, if it's safer just to have it. All right, so, none of us know, really. My suggestion is we postpone to November 7th. You will at that point have figured out whether or not that the hearing can be, needs to be kept open. If it's kept open, then we have the hearing on the 7th. We open and we close the hearing for the remaining hearing items, and we still plan on deliberations on November the 14th. But for now, I need a, I need a motion. Is this you again, Brandon? I don't know, do we?
That was my motion to adjourn, but whatever you want it to be.
So I'd like a motion to move this meeting to November the 7th.
Okay, so I move to move this meeting to November the 7th.
Thank you. Second in my, Mr. Spohes, any opposed? Hearing none. We're moved to November 7th with the intent to deliberate on the 14th. Yep. And you're going to clarify tomorrow what that really means. Great. Thank you. Mr. Walker, a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.